It looks like we've got everybody in now and seated. Let me call the meeting to order. This is a regularly called and scheduled city council meeting. Called to convene June 8th, 2021. We are going to open the meeting this evening with a public hearing. Public hearing is called and convened in regards to ordinance number 28-21. This is the City of Greer budget ordinance fiscal year 2021 through 22. This is an ordinance relating to the fiscal affairs of the City of Greer, South Carolina, making appropriations therefore, levying taxes and to provide for an effective date. Public hearing is now open. I would ask by show of hand if anyone would like to address council in regards to ordinance number 28-2021. Yes, sir, if you'll come to the podium here in the front. And as a matter of record, if you will state your name and address, I would appreciate it, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Cory. I'm Booker. I stay at 554 Bobbrook Drive. That's in Greer, South Carolina. I do want to open up with saying it's an interesting year for you guys to be picking a tax increase, especially with elections coming on this year. So that's all I got to say on that. I just basically want to say I'm in opposition of a tax increase. I have a litany of reasons. Basically, just to give a few, I see that you have programmed to Greer release a million dollars worth of money. Does that all have to be done in the same year? Can that not be broken up? Also, I see that, let me pull my notes out here. I feel like we're not managing, especially with the golf course. I went back, watched all the videos of you guys' responses to your budget items. A lot of you feel like you're on the fence, and I just want to be the nail in the coffin to say that there's a lot of structural things that should be changed within the city administration wise as it relates to how this money should be spent. Three times going over a golf course that I feel, I've been to the golf course just to go to the restaurant, and every time I go to the restaurant, there's no one there. A year ago, Dr. Norma Givens came and she stated she would like to see a first tee program done at the golf course. I know you mentioned that at the last meeting. These are the type of things that I feel like if we give more money, where is this going to go to? A simple question was asked, how many bridges are there in the city of Greer? I can tell you from a quick search, there's 42 bridges in the seat of Greer. Eight of them are on county city roads. There's only one bridge that the city owns in the seat of Greer. When you talk about paving roads, we all know that there's state roads, county roads, city roads. All the city roads that the city owns are all subdivisions. These roads should be preserved mostly, and a lot of these paving operations are mostly going to happen in the middle villages where these roads are 50, 70 years old. So I feel like this money, if we add more to it, we need to have a definite plan on how it's going to be spent. Philosophically, I agree with prices going up, but in practice, I feel that currently in the state without some reform and looking at, you know, just budgets, I mean, not budgets, but cola increases, 90% of this budget goes to administration. If you do the math of 5% of that, we're looking at well over a million dollars just in cola increases, merit-based bonuses, and if I'm wrong, you guys can converse about that. But this is the information that I've looked up. So I feel that now is not the time and that without some substantive changes in how we're doing things, it's not appropriate for a tax increase. Thank you.
Once again, by show of hand, is there anyone here that would like to address council in regards to ordinance number 28-2021? I'll ask a third and final time, by show of hand, would anyone like to address council in a public hearing held to discuss ordinance number 28-2021? Since no one has indicated that they would like to speak to ordinance 28-2021, I would call the public hearing to a close. We will move on with the regular meeting, and of course, that ordinance will be discussed at a later time during the meeting. Having called the meeting to order, I'd like to ask Mr. Councilmember Wayne Griffin if he would to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, followed by an implication for council. If you would, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done. Father God, it's once again a feud of your humble servants, call them by thy holy and righteous name. Father, we ask you, come and guide us in this meeting, Father God, for we know if we do your will, we can't go wrong. Now, Father, I ask for a special blessing for all our city employees. Father God, wrap your loving arms around them, protect them from all danger seen and unseen. These and all other blessings, as you press in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
We thank you for joining us this evening. This is a regularly scheduled council meeting. You can find those dates and times listed on our website, as well as a host of other information in regards to programming and other types of events. As you can see, we are having an event in the park this evening, and there is something scheduled on a regular basis throughout the year, but particularly during the summer, you will find a number of events that are held throughout the city, and I would urge you to check that website out from time to time. Public forum is held at the first of each meeting. That is an opportunity for the public to address council regarding items that are on the agenda. Ms. Duncan, do we have anybody to appear this evening?
No.
With that then, council, let's move to the minutes of the council meeting. You have in your packet the minutes from the May 25th, 2021 meeting. I will entertain a motion that they be received. Have a motion in a second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Council, as we have the honor of doing from time to time, we have a special recognition this evening. I would like to ask the men and coaches and women, if they're involved as well, to join me here in the front for a special recognition. And if y'all will come here to the front, I've got a proclamation that I would like to offer. I'd like to invite some biggest kids in this room, Mr. Andy Merriman to join us. I believe you know some of these fellows. You know some of these fellows. And I'm going to let you speak to that here in just a minute. Welcome to the City of Greer and thank you for attending this evening. It is our honor to offer this proclamation to you. This proclamation reads that the South Ringel Rugby Club, whereas the Greer community has enjoyed a rich history of both youth and adult athletic programs offered by the City Parks and Recreation Department, with the success of these offerings earning the reputation as a statewide leader in the programming of youth sports, and whereas the sport of rugby is one of the fastest growing team sports in the United States among both boys and girls, and whereas sports tourism is a proven economic development with rugby being a niche market that is quickly bearing fruit for the City of Greer. The City of Greer is proud to have Turnerfield serve as the home field with the South Ringel Rugby Team and the premier venue for rugby in the upstate, having hosted teams and hundreds of parents and fans from across the southeast, whereas the South Ringel Rugby Club hosted the Wando Rugby Club in Turnerfield for the state championship on May 22nd, defeating the Warriors in a tight game by a score of 18 to 14 to earn the title. Now therefore being resolved that I, written and mayor of the City of Greer, South Carolina, do like to recognize and congratulate coaches Warren Taylor, Patrick Tungan, and Mark Dwellow, all the boys of the South Ringel Rugby Club for a successful season culminating in a state championship victory. For their efforts of promoting the sport of rugby to the youth in our area and for their hard work and dedication, we make this proclamation. Join me and give a round of applause to the South Rugby State Championship. Thank you. Stay in the background, don't get anything to go out of word, and I think y'all should as well too.
To the City of Greer, our biggest part of us, we really appreciate everything that you've done for us. The rugby, the boys and girls in our research lab would never be where they were if it wasn't for you. At the beginning of this year, we had one player that really had played rugby before, and we've gone from that to being state champions. And there's no need for each other than the fact that it was Greer who supports us, Greer who helped us, and Greer who made us who we are. And hopefully from now on, we'll have a longstanding relationship with Greer, and South Ringel's home will be in Greer from now on. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Congratulations, ladies, and me, and thank y'all very much. Congratulations and thank y'all again, we appreciate it. This is a unique opportunity for us, and we don't often get these kinds of opportunities, and we appreciate y'all calling our field song, and thank you for what you're doing, and wear that state championship proudly, and every time you look at me, tell me you're from Greer now. Thank you.
Boy, you should have come here 20 years ago. That's a young man's game, boy.
I guess we're going to have to talk to CPW about making space on the water tower for the state championship. Andy, what age boys are those?
So, Mr. Mayor, you've got ninth through 12th grade.
Okay. You've got some pretty sizable boys.
Yes.
They love to run in.
Well, I think it's that, the big boys love running each other, and the little guys out there go toe-to-toe with them too. It's a sport for everybody, it's fun.
With that in, then we'll move to the administrative's report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Real quickly, a couple things. One, just want to remind you, Freedom Blast on the 26th of June, we are very excited to have it again this year after a one-year hiatus. I think we'll bottle the energy that would have been expended in 2020, and we'll have a double helping this year, so we're very excited about that. Another reminder about Municipal Association's conference coming up. I would ask and remind you to make sure that you get the information that you need to tammy by no later than tomorrow morning. The third thing is the work on Leesburg Peak that was authorized to be started at your last council meeting has begun. They've mobilized in the area and have begun work. I don't think we've got more than a week or two left to work out there, so there shouldn't be too much more to surface for the residents in that area. And finally, just a reminder, the BMW Pro-Am is being held this weekend at Thornblading, and I bring that up to remind you that accommodations tax money actually goes to promote Greer and the things that we do in golf, especially at the Pro-Am. So be looking for a Greer ad on the Golf Channel if you're watching the Pro-Am this weekend. With that, Mr. Mayor and council, if you don't have any other questions, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Council, let's move to appointments of boards and commissions. This is the time of year when we have a number of those positions open. Mr. McMahon is going to join us here briefly as we get on into that. First one before us this evening is the Greenbells Spartanburg International Airport Environment Planning Commission. Our current representative is Mr. Andy Burley. Andy lives not far from me. I visited with him this past week, and Andy, who is a retired colonel from the Air Force and certainly has a long history in aviation, has agreed to continue to serve the Airport Environment Planning Commission on our behalf, and so I would like to nominate Mr. William A. Andy Burley for another term, and we'll entertain a second to that nomination. Second. I have a motion in second on the floor. Any additional questions or comments in that regard? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Board of Architectural Review, Brandon Price's term will expire at the end of this month. Any additional or new information in regards to the Board of Architectural Review? Mr. McMahon?
Yes, sir, Mayor and council. I reached out to Mr. Price. He has indicated that he would like to continue to serve if that is council's desire.
I'll entertain a motion to receive. And a second. Any additional conversation in that regard, comments, questions? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Board of the Zoning Appeals, District 2, Lindora Massey. Any information in that regard?
Not this time, Mayor.
District 4, Robbie Septon.
Mr. Septon is no longer going to be able to serve, so I'm going to have to find a replacement for him, and I will have his replacement at our next meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Crosby, District 5.
Yes, sir. Mr. Crosby has reached out to us and indicated that he would like to continue to serve if that is council's desire.
Okay. That comes as a motion from Mr. Bettis. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Floor is open for discussion or questions. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Council, I've contacted Monica Reagan-Huey. She is agreeable to serving another term on the Board of the Zoning Appeals. I would like to nominate Ms. Huey. That comes as a motion. I'll entertain a second. Second. Any questions in that regard, comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Council, the municipal judge, I have spoken personally with our judge, Mr. Hank Mims. He is delighted that we have extended an invitation for him to continue as our municipal judge. I bring that forth as a recommendation. Entertain a second.
Second.
Floor is open for any discussion or questions in that regard. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Planning Commission, District 3, Tom Creasy's term expires 6/30/2021.
Yes, sir. Staff will reach out to Mr. Creasy, and we'll hopefully have information for you at the next meeting.
Thank you. District 6, Brian Martin's term expires 6/30.
I have been working on that. I'm sorry I have not come up with the name yet.
Okay.
But I'm doing my best to know about that.
Fine, thank you. Our at-large representative, William Lavender, I have spoken with him this week. He is agreeable to serving another term. I offer that as a motion. I'll entertain a second. Floor is open for questions or discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Council, we'll move to items of all business, the second and final reading of ordinance number 25-2021. This is the first item of business before us. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by R. 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 E. I. L. L. C., located at 103 Marquette Street from R. 12 to R. 5. Mr. McMahon, new or additional information in regards to ordinance number 25-2021?
Yes, sir. At the last meeting, Councilman Arrowood asked for some elevations. We have reached out to the applicant. This is kind of what they're proposing. This is not a definite, this is kind of what they're thinking about. This is the front elevation and the side elevation, and that is all the information that I have at this time, sir.
For purposes of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive. So moved. And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion.
That looks very compatible with the neighborhood, for sure.
Very consistent.
Yeah, it's similar to that. I think it would be very consistent. Others? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Second item before us is the second and final reading of ordinance number 26-2021. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Green Places LLC., located at 116 Morrow Street from G. R. D. to R. 7.5. New or additional information in regards to ordinance number 26-2021?
No, sir, there is no new information.
Entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second. Second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Council, the second and final reading of ordinance number 27-2021 is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by James Brady Hallifield, located at 647 Blackwell Road from I. 1 to R. 15. Mr. McMahon, any new or additional information in regards to ordinance number 27-2021?
No, sir, there is no new information.
Comes without any new or additional information, I'll entertain a motion for the purpose of discussion to receive. So moved. Second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions?
They don't have a projected timeframe again, right? I believe on the last meeting they did.
They're working through their preliminary plat right now for their design.
Others? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Last item of all business this evening is the second and final reading of ordinance 28-2021. This is the City of Greer budget ordinance fiscal year 2021 through 2022, an ordinance relating to the fiscal affairs of the City of Greer, South Carolina, making appropriations therefore, levying taxes and to provide for an effective date. I'll, for the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive. So moved. And a second.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, may I, if you would please, if you would bring us a oversight since our last meeting of where we are at this point? I think it would be appreciated, and then council may have questions and/or discussions.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Just by, just way a reminder, this budget does look a little bit different than the budgets in the past. We have separated the millage that ordinarily had gone into individual, or had separated millage that went into one bucket, for lack of a better term, and set it aside into three dedicated buckets. Staff had initially requested or recommended a 2.1 mil increase to be, or excuse me, 2.2 mil increase to be separated between the debt service funding and the new infrastructure bucket. Council objected to that and recommended and made an amendment to reflect a 1.2 mil increase specific to the already increased infrastructure bucket that would go towards dedicated street maintenance, sidewalks, trails, et cetera. So that's been the intent. This is the budget that you have in front of you. There was a couple other minor changes. For instance, we had overlooked some overtime line items that we had to adjust. We'd moved the project manager position that we had put in there under administration to Department 445. We'd also modified the job duties that we had previously outlined in that position. We'd also had some recommended changes to the premiums that employees pay that was in the original budget that we have since reduced, and so the budget you have in front of you has been, reflects that change. And then finally, the last part of what we had talked about was we initially had a 1.23% cola increase in there and a 3% merit-based increase. We have modified that to a 1.78% cost of living adjustment and lowered the merit to 2.45. This was due to just offsetting, trying to offset some of the mitigating impacts of the premium increases. Those really are the changes that you see today. The major one, of course, is the amended budget getting us to 99 mils total. So, Mr. Mayor, unless you have specific questions, that's the overview.
Council, floor is open for discussion, questions, comments.
Mr. Mayor, before we start the discussion, I'd like to thank, what's his name, Mr. Booker? I really appreciate, I've been sitting on this council since 2004, and probably every budget we have a public hearing, and I probably can count on these two hands how many people have shown up over the years to speak. So I appreciate, it sounds like you've reviewed it, and hopefully some of the questions that you have, that questions or comments you have, get answered as we go through discussion. But thank you.
Others? I agree with what you say, sir, and as you well know, I'm not in favor of raising taxes. I do appreciate the massage that was done to kind of mitigate that and to pledge that excess will go into an infrastructure position. I think if we're going to have excess, that's where it needs to go. I will vote in favor of it because it's a minimal tax increase. No tax increase to me is good, but we've gone a long time without addressing, putting that kind of funds where it needs to be, and I think it's justified in this case. But I made it clear to Mr. Merriman that I'm not going to be bumping that every year.
Just to make, how is, since we're dedicating actual millage to infrastructure, is that part of the text of the ordinance? How is that?
Yes, sir. The ordinance itself, the language in the ordinance reflects that you've got, we've got dedicated operations millage, dedicated debt service millage, dedicated infrastructure millage.
Mr. Mayorman, can you speak to the concern of an understanding of 90% of the budget being for administration that was voiced?
Yeah. So it's like any service-oriented body, so much of what we do is person, is people-related. If we break it down to a percentage standpoint of this budget, we're somewhere in the neighborhood of 65% of our budget is related to personnel and personnel costs. I think Mr. Booker brought up a, an issue with, with cost of living increases, et cetera. And he's right, it's not quite a million dollars, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of about half a million dollars, but any number is going to be staggering and shocking to consensus, but we're at about that 65% of our budget is personnel-related. And that puts us just, just by way of comparison, we're probably right in the middle of the pack of local municipalities with some as high as 73%, some as low as 58 or 59%. So it's hard to do an apples-to-apples comparison a lot of times, but in this case, that's where we are.
I appreciate, you know, some explanation in that. And I know Riley has carried the torch for, for that for a number of years.
And I think part of the reason that that number seems so extreme is that it's not a, it's not a particular, we don't see that in, in most businesses because of the structure and the nature of the business. We have, how many employees now at this point?
We have a budgeted for just south of 300. We have about 264 right now, sir.
So 300, you know, 300 employees at, for the operation of the city of this size and with the size of budget that we've got seems, seems appropriate. The other thing is that statistically, it's always dangerous in some regards when you, you start trying to link things to, to statistics and particularly in terms of comparisons because to Mr. Mayorman's point, we know that there are other local municipalities and certainly municipalities across the state that either by virtue of the fact that they, they have special purpose districts that they work with or that have recreation departments that are not housed under the city or whatever, may not, may not show all of the employees that, that they have under their umbrella. So sometimes that can be a bit misleading in some regards. So, you know, I think in terms of how we have, how we have grown and how we have staffed those needs, as, as interesting as, or as that, that number is and continues to grow, I don't think that we will, will ever be at the point that, that we've, that we've got too many employees. We, we will, we will outgrow that fairly quickly and we're moving in that direction right now. So just a note in that regard.
It's taken me a long time, but I, I do understand that Drigger's doctrine of services are only product and it takes people and things to, to carry through on that. And that costs money. I still, I like to see us kind of hold the line on that expense, but I understand.
As a, a related matter, I have been in another municipality for the past few months for work that we're doing. And you mentioned that some municipalities, some, some government bodies contract with others or they have others to help them with different things. And so therefore, their, their percentage for labor is maybe less. I can say, and this is just one example, I'm not saying this is the entire case, but just riding by some of the facilities, they don't hold a candle to what, what we have. I like to say the wealth that we create by having nice-looking facilities because that, that just encourages other folks to have nice-looking properties. So I, I do believe that in most cases that our, our dollars are being well-spent for our labor.
And I, I'd like to echo Mr. Arrowood's thoughts too. And I too would like to thank Mr. Booker for his comments because I think the public paying attention to us is what makes us really bear down and have good conversation. I'd also like to thank this council for the conversations that, that we've had. I've been here through budgets where we were at each other's throats, well into 1:00, 2:00 in, in the morning, you know, and those are, those are really, really tough times when decisions had to be made. And this council has given great forethought to, to the way we handle the budgets now and then. And it's funny to see Riley come around after all these years of saying, I just gotta laugh at that, Riley. I feel like I'm in the Twilight Zone, you know? But just to hear him say that feels like I'm in the Twilight Zone, listen to the music, you know? But I think there's a great deal of thought that's been into this, put into this budget. And we've, over the past years, we've put more money into the roads to trying to bring them up to par. We know we still got a long way to go, but you know, you got to make the first step and you got to start to put funds where it need to be. And I think this council has shown a propensity to do that. And I'm just glad for the discussion that we have, even when we don't agree, you know, I think that makes us stronger too.
I'll echo what I said a couple of weeks ago. I appreciate, I believe that a number of different concerns and needs have been addressed in a very balanced way. And so I appreciate Mr. Mayorman and, and staff and, and the way this has been put together. You know, Mr. Bettis says no tax increase is a good thing or desirable thing. I wholeheartedly agree. I really had pause when I learned of the recommended millage increase myself, just on principle itself. And then as Mr. Booker mentioned, the, the timing, et cetera. I will say that one thing that I've heard over and over in my campaign, fall of 2019, was concern for roads and infrastructure as we do grow. And I think we all desire smart growth. We all desire to grow in a right way. And in my view, infrastructure, roads, sidewalks, bridges, these are the things, the ones that we are responsible for, these are the non-negotiables. And so that is why I did come around to supporting the small millage increase that, that we are considering. And one thing I appreciate is the way that it was broken out transparently as well. I think that's very important for my constituents, all of our constituents is if we're going to have a, a little bump is understanding very clearly what that's going to and making sure that it's not just bloat of government, but it is a core function that we are charged to make sure that we don't get behind on. We've had the discussion that, you know, we haven't been on the trajectory that we would want to with the roads and the infrastructure that we are responsible for, and that's just not acceptable. I think most of our constituents would agree that that's just not acceptable. And so this is that, a great first step in putting us back on that trajectory on a non-negotiable such as the roads we are responsible for.
I think one of the things that we do need to remember as well too, and, and I think sometimes this may be a bit lost on the public is ad valorem taxes only accounts for less than 50% of our annual budget. I know at one time it was closer to 40%. So, you know, somewhere in that 50 to 60% of our budget range comes from sources other than ad valorem taxes. And while I, I agree, you know, tax increases are, are never an easy pill to swallow. That only accounts for, you know, a certain percentage of our budget. The rest of that comes from other revenue sources and licenses and fees and any number of different areas. And so, you know, I hope that our citizens understand that it is always a balancing act for us in, in a lot of regards. And, and sometimes that does come down to, to difficult decisions. And in some cases, decisions that on their, on their very face may appear a bit odd. And I know there was a question raised in regards to the money for Greer relief. And, you know, that was a very intentional direction that we went, that we were gifted a piece of properties that, that when we sold, we made a decision as a council that money would be returned in some form or fashion to the betterment of our community. And that's the, that's the direction that we are heading in that regard. And so that is not costing the taxpayers a dime at this point. So, you know, sometimes we, we, we have a windfall and sometimes we don't, but when we do, we try and put it to the best use that we possibly can. And we felt like when we made that decision several years ago, that that was, that was the best thing for us to do. And we have banked that money until the appropriate time came for us to disperse it. So again, Mr. Booker, I, you know, just thank you for digging into the budget. Iron sharpens iron, sir. And so, you know, we are always on our toe about how we spend our money. And thank you for bringing that to the forefront tonight. Any further thoughts, conversations, or questions in regards to the second and final reading of ordinance 28-2021?
I have two things. First, I told you all last week that I would agree to support the 1.2 mil increase with the dedicated funds to infrastructure. I think we're in a place where we have to do that based on the engineer's report. I think he told us we were $750,000 behind in getting the roads up to where they need to be. And in our defense as a council, I don't think we were aware that that was the situation. And so he brought that report to us last year and it's like, oh my goodness, we got to do something about this. And so I'm, I'm excited that we have this infrastructure fund now that's going to be taking a bite out of it. But inevitably, you know, just based on his recommendation, we're still a half million dollars short in fully funding this program. And I'll reiterate and go back to what I said, I really think we need to consider some type of impact fee or infrastructure program or something like that that is tied to new development. And I've just had some brief conversations with staff and they've taken a look at some other cities and, and talked about how the impact fees are creating a, a steady source of revenue. And I'd love to put that on a future agenda where we could get some of those reports from staff and we can look at what other counties and cities are doing with those dollars and, and figure out if that's something, if we need to conduct that study and if that's something that we need to, to get involved in. And I'd love to have that conversation as a council. And the second thing I'd like to bring up, thank you, Mr. Booker, for your comments and what you had to say tonight is in regards to the golf course, and I brought this up last time. I, I really, I understand we're making the investment on the front side right now and we're trying to make all the improvements. And, and I, I really hope that once that happens, that we put this thing out to the public and let them know that it's open as a city club now and that we are, we're inviting the youth, we're inviting minorities, we're inviting ladies, we're inviting everyone to come out and participate. And I, and I really want us to keep it on a short leash because if the city doesn't support the golf course, then we need to start thinking long-term, you know, what's the highest and best use for a city resource going forward? If the golf course can't support itself, then we need to start thinking about other alternative sport. I hope that it will. I hope the community will embrace it. I hope that it'll appreciate all the hard work and the changes that we're making out there. But, but if they don't, we need to be thinking about our long-range planning for, for the golf course. And I know that we'll continue to have those discussions moving forward.
Interesting points, you know, the, none of us that own a house think that we're going to live there forever without doing work on it. And sort of like the same thing with the, you know, with the roads. 15, 17 years ago, we had a, a dire warning from a city engineer about the condition of our roads and what would happen if we didn't address that issue. And we've done an admirable job over that period of time, but it was, to say the least, eye-opening a bit to know that even as good a job as we had been doing, that we were being outpaced by inflation and construction costs and wear and tear. And as we continue to grow, I think it's appropriate, as, as you've mentioned, that we look at alternative sources, but having a dedicated source will be one way to, to help us address that. So, you know, what, what goes around comes around sometimes.
Others? I would like to thank staff for the last-minute documents that put together to outline the Hurriedly done, and I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayorman and Mr. Seifert, Ms. Howell joins us this evening. Thank y'all. Appreciate your time and other staff members as well, too. Anything else for the good of the discussion this evening?
I'd like to say I'm glad to see David smiling. He's been there through the good and the bad.
We get in the shot once a year. It's the second year we get in the shot since. It is indeed a, a labor of luck. I, I know that they have spent countless hours, and to Riley's point, have, have communicated most effectively in regards to some last-minute changes. Any other thoughts?
Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, let's move to our only item of new business this evening, which is the bid summary of the construction of an outdoor restroom facility at Turner Field. Mr. Watson joins us for that discussion.
Thank you, Mayor Daner and members of counsel, for the opportunity to present the results from our solicitation of bids for Turner Restaurant Building Construction. If you will recall, this is part of our Land and Water Conservation Fund grant. We used part of those funds to purchase a building from RomTech about six months ago. Building is shipped here on pallets and now we have accepted bids for a construction company to come in and assemble or construct the building. We're recommending Apostolic Construction be awarded the bid. They are locally owned, have operated in the upstate for over 20 years, extensive history with the City of Greer and our department, a very reputable company. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Counsel, the recommendation from staff, I hear, motion received? End of second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Comments?
The only thing I saw on there, I know that it's very big difference in price, but as far as sea parks and recreation, I know they made good decisions on what's going to be done to, to look around and see that. But my question was about liability insurance.
On the bid tabulation?
Yeah, where it says liability insurance form included. I mean, they don't have liability insurance.
I think that they, I'm sorry, go ahead. I think that they did not submit that certificate with their individual bid. I know that they do currently hold a city business license and one of the requirements to have a license is that they must have that liability. So they just didn't submit the form with the bid, I think. And I, I think Apostolic is a, a smaller company than Laser Construction. Laser's a very big outfit and Apostolic certainly, I would guess, does not have as much overhead as Laser and that may contribute to the discrepancy between the two bids.
Little fisticuffs for one on that side.
Was going on, ended, ended that.
Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. Counsel, we have no items for executive session this evening. Stand clear.